That are for our future bond issue that is not, um, April twenty twenty four is when that bond issue election will happen. Um, we are in progress, um, with the board and our advisory committee.
Perfect. So once we get to the fun part of the program, uh, these things start taking shape out in the field. And so I'm trying to be here on behalf of the project management side. And really, that's what I feel like it is. Construction is is fun. It's supposed to be fun. We've we've got a lot of of projects that that are stressful, but that tries to be, you know, on our side of the table. So the the aspect of of taking these visions of improvement and bringing them to fruition is something that we're all here for. So, um, what we do on the construction phase is we try and manage every aspect of risk. And that starts, number one, with safety. We've got anywhere from developing site safety logistic plans, monitoring traffic patterns, through just overall keeping an immaculate job site. There's no corners to be cut on our side. Safety is always number one. We take great pride in bringing our families into your construction projects, but then also at the end of the everyday, bringing them back home to their families. And that same thing will apply with Lindbergh and the and the staff and student population as well. Just like safety, go hand in hand, quality control. The QA QC process actually starts long before any of shovels in the ground. We're taking care of those QA items throughout preconstruction, but that doesn't stop there. It continues straight into construction as well. We've got a dedicated staff that we'll talk about here in a moment for our quality control, which is similar to our safety aspect. But these guys are out there, they're taking a look at all the design specs and plans prior to getting in the field, kind of heading off some some quality control items, not only in the design phase, but looking at construction. We're putting together preinstallation meetings for some of those key activities that take place, a lot of those being with concrete or building envelopes. We'll have those site meetings in person with our superintendent, our quality control staff, and then the contractors that actually be installing said equipment. And then basically that that goes through the entire process of the building construction. It just doesn't stop there. We've got ongoing site inspections that will last throughout, kind of spot inspections that'll take place with many of our staff as well. Uh, I'm gonna pass over communication tools for just a a moment here and go to budget control. And I know this is maybe sounds weird, but budget control is actually one of the reasons I really love CM projects. Math is kind of my thing, but just to be able to have these tools for ourselves, to be able to be in control of all of the owners' finances, you know, we're setting budgets up at the preconstruction stage, but to have our goal of this is what we need to stay inside of for a budget and maintain. I've kind of got a like a Rain Man matrix Excel sheet that we're going through. And I've got that open on every single day for each of my school projects. And I'm making sure that, you know, we're we're managing allowances, contingencies, contractor payment applications, I mean, every dime, to where somebody from our accounting staff or superintendent might want to know, hey, where does this sit right now? And I can tell you at the drop of a of a dime where where everything sits and where your money stands within the budget. Along with that would be schedule management because I think everybody would say time is money. We have an extensive staff that'll that'll communicate our schedules, not only the overall project schedules, how those look like with milestone schedules prior to construction taking place, but as we go throughout the project, we also have updated weekly four-week look ahead schedules. Those are developed on our side through construction management, but those are collaborative with the contractors that are on site to make sure that we're giving realistic and proactive schedules as well. And then collaboration with Lindbergh schools, I mean, that's that says what it is. Depends on the client as far as how much collaboration is going to be needed. Some clients we've had come up and say, hey, you're the construction expert. I want you guys to take care of things. And that's fine. It's it's not typical, and we would like to have you involved as much as we can. Certainly would take anything that you you want to be involved with and over communicate that from our side. And that's kind of where our communication tools come into play. So we we're, I don't know if everybody's familiar with this, but we're we're very high on the the site that we use is Procore, and it basically has everything from our construction process. It's submittals, RFI's, ASI's, photos, you name it, the drawing specs, everything is available just by clicking in on this website. And we give that access to our owners and they can see everything. But we also develop on our side, we we try to, we're getting into this phase where we're every Monday morning on a particular project, we'll develop these weekly reports. And those will say, hey, here's what took place last week. Here's what we're looking for for construction this week. Here's where your finances stand. Here's some things that might be hanging out in the the balance from phone conversations over the last week. And then here's five or ten photos of of what's going on. Certainly, it's your job site. Love to have you guys take a look at it anytime. And our superintendents are always willing to to do those walkthroughs as well. But again, we're just trying to over communicate any aspect that we have. We've got some other tools that are available as well. The HoloBuilder, which is a three sixty photo program, where you can just go in again on a website, take a click at a particular room, and you can see everything that's ongoing as of as of the last photo that's been taken in that space. And we've got cost loaded schedules as well. Any communication tool that we can to to suit the needs that are being asked of us is what we try to to bring to the forefront there. Go to the next slide here.
So you ask why Putger. Ryan mentioned it earlier about our slogan of our quality relationships, build your quality projects. That ninety-five percent of our work is repeat clients.
That's where we leverage the resources we have and the relationships we have with local trade contractors because they're doing it every day. So I know there's kind of four blocks on the, but it really all comes into one role for me to juggle all these tasks at the same time. And it's, and it's not a linear progress process. It's circular. And we're always looking to the next project, but we're also working on the original project. We're looking at the program level and the project level at the same time. Because at the end of the day, we need to make sure that we're mindful of what's to come and that we're being mindful of the resources we have available. And those trade contractors provide a lot of insight into market conditions from both labor force, material availability, equipment selection. What's the, you know, the best way to go? How can we economize design? Maybe we can do a detail a little bit different to make it a little more effective, save some labor hours, costs. Or maybe there's a creative way to approach a problem. So that's what I do through pre-construction. I'm with the team all the way through to the end, but I'll kind of transition to Ryan a little bit and hit the more specific stuff.
Yeah, well, another thing I just wanted to add on pre-construction, I might differentiate Putker a little bit from others is that we have multiple engineers on staff that have expertise in mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. I myself am one of them. I'm involved in the early stages. And my past experience was, I told you a little bit ago, was with an engineering firm, which we primarily did K through 12 and higher ed. So that past experience I use to do peer reviews and monitor budgets from the, from the beginning part of the project, all the way through, all the way through to the end of the project as well. So with that, I'm going to switch the slides and transfer over to Chris.
Perfect. So once we get to the fun part of the program, these things start taking shape out in the field. And so I'm trying to be here on behalf of the project management side. And really, that's what I feel like it is. Construction is, is fun. It's supposed to be fun. We've, we've got a lot of, of projects that are stressful, but that tries to be, you know, on our side of the table. So the, the aspect of, of taking these visions of improvement and bringing them to fruition is something that we're all here for. So what we do on the construction phase is we try and manage every aspect of risk. And that starts, number one, with safety. We've got anywhere from developing site safety logistic plans, monitoring traffic patterns, through just overall keeping an immaculate job site. There's no corners to be cut on our side. Safety is always number one. We take great pride in bringing our families into your construction projects, but then also at the end of every day, bringing them back home to their families. And that same thing will apply with Lindbergh and the, and the staff and student population as well. Just like safety, go hand in hand, quality control. The QA QC process actually starts long before any of shovels in the ground. We're taking care of those QA items throughout pre-construction, but that doesn't stop there. It continues straight into construction as well. We've got a dedicated staff that we'll talk about here in a moment for our quality control, which is similar to our safety aspect. But these guys are out there, they're taking a look at all the design specs and plans prior to getting in the field. Kind of heading off some, some quality control items, not only in the design phase, but looking at construction. We're, we're putting together pre-installation meetings for some of those key activities that take place. A lot of those being with concrete or building envelopes. We'll have those site meetings in person with our superintendent, our quality control staff, and then the contractors that actually be installing said equipment. And then basically that, that goes through the entire process of the building construction. It just doesn't stop there. We've got ongoing site inspections that will last throughout, kind of spot inspections that'll take place with many of our staff as well. I'm going to pass over communication tools for just a moment here and go to budget control. And I know this is maybe sounds weird, but budget control is actually one of the reasons I really love CM projects. Math is kind of my thing, but just to be able to have these tools for ourselves, to be able to be in control of all of the owners' finances. You know, we're setting budgets up at the pre-construction stage, but to have our goal of this is what we need to stay inside of for a budget and maintain. I've kind of got a, like a Rain Man matrix Excel sheet that we're going through. I've got that open on every single day for each of my school projects. And I'm making sure that, you know, we're, we're managing allowances, contingencies, contractor payment applications, I mean, every dime. To where somebody from our accounting staff or superintendent might want to know, hey, where does this sit right now? And I can tell you at the drop of, of a dime where, where everything sits and where your money stands within the budget. Along with that would be schedule management, because I think everybody would say time is money. We have an extensive staff that'll, that'll communicate our schedules, not only the overall project schedules, how those look like with milestone schedules prior to construction taking place. But as we go throughout the project, we also have updated weekly four-week look ahead schedules. Those are developed on our side through construction management, but those are collaborative with the contractors that are on site to make sure that we're giving realistic and proactive schedules as well. And then collaboration with Lindbergh Schools, I mean, that's, that says what it is. Depends on the client as far as how much collaboration is going to be needed. Some clients we've had come up and say, hey, you're the construction expert. I want you guys to take care of things. And that's fine. It's, it's not typical and we would like to have you involved as much as we can. Certainly would take anything that you, you want to be involved with and over-communicate that from our side. And that's kind of where our communication tools come into play. So we, we're, I don't know if everybody's familiar with this, but we're, we're very high on the, the site that we use is Procore. And it basically has everything from our construction process. It's submittals, RFIs, ASIs, photos, you name it, the drawing specs, everything is available just by clicking in on this website. We give that access to our owners and they can see everything. But we also develop on our side, we, we try to, we're getting into this phase where we're, every Monday morning on a particular project, we'll develop these weekly reports. And those will say, hey, here's what took place last week. Here's what we're looking for for construction this week. Here's where your finances stand. Here's some things that might be hanging out in the, the balance from phone conversations over the last week. And then here's five or 10 photos of, of what's going on. Certainly, it's your job site. Love to have you guys take a look at it anytime. And our superintendents are always willing to, to do those walkthroughs as well. But again, we're just trying to over-communicate any aspect that we have. We've got some other tools that are available as well. The HoloBuilder, which is a 360 photo program, where you can just go in again on a website, take a click at a particular room, and you can see everything that's ongoing as of, as of the last photo that's been taken in that space. And we've got cost-loaded schedules as well, any communication tool that we can to, to suit the needs that are being asked of us is what we try to, to bring to the forefront there. Go to the next slide here.
So you ask why Putker. Ryan mentioned it earlier about our slogan of our quality relationships, build your quality projects. That 95% of our work is repeat clients and referrals. So that's what that comes from. And it's not just with the, to, to get you a successful project or successful program. It's also those relationships have to be developed with the subcontractors. So with our previous experience and our current experience with subcontractor base in this area, we have a good base. We'll perform outreach events. We show appreciation, throw appreciation events. And that's all so we can get good coverage for your project on, on that, on that scale. Another thing would be risk management. Our risk management department, Chris touched on a little bit about is QA. So in the risk management, we have safety, we have quality, we have warranty, and then we have our coordinators. That department is actually separate from our operations department. And what that allows is there's no conflict of interest there. So the guy that's reviewing safety isn't always also the guy that's reporting to the superintendent. He reports directly to the project executives at the executive level. So that lets us, there's no, we don't have any sweeping it under the rugs. If there's an issue, we want it resolved. So and that's what we feel is the best way to get that accomplished. And then obviously, this is with education. We have vast experience in education projects. Why that's most important is because of schedules. A lot of these projects, you have a truncated amount of time to do a lot of work. And we're very, we have a lot of experience in that. So we realize what goes into that. When issues come up, you can't be finger pointing at what's going here, what's going there. We need to get everybody to the table, figure out what's going on and how are we going to fix the problem? And be able to either maintain the current schedule, or if we lost a little bit of time where we have to do a little bit more, how are we going to catch back up to get back on schedule? Because that date that you have in your academic calendar, when the students are coming back down, that does not change. So. And then obviously, we talked about safety. That's always our most critical thing with students and everybody on the job or around the job site. Safety is most critical. So that's what we're always thinking about. If it's projects going on outside during the school year, but outside of the, we maintain passive egress. Do what we have to do to get safe passageway for students and to keep their curious minds from wandering into the project sites. So I think that's all I have on that one. I do appreciate everybody's time and allowing us to come in here and to present to you all tonight.
We wanted to keep it shorter so we could ask some questions and try to.
Most important part is hearing what you guys want to know.
My mic on, sorry. I think Ben, thanks for the second question. Ben answered the question already on number one was CMAR is often referred to as open book construction. What does open book mean to you? And I know you said two hour phone call where I can ask you that every single number. So.
Yeah, so our, our open book policy runs all the way from the first day to the end. You know, Chris mentioned his, his spreadsheet. But, you know, to the over-communication, we will, we will have weekly meetings with the design team from the, as soon as there's a piece of paper for me to start looking at, we're going to start having weekly meetings. And you guys are more than welcome to sit on that meeting or represent someone to be on that meeting. And then each phase, depending on complexity, usually, at a minimum, it's usually three budgets, but it could be as many as 10. It just depends on the complexity and how the project and how the budget is, is advancing. Again, it's a living estimate. So if we're tracking like everything's fine, maybe we'll do four or five or three or four. If we're tracking over right away, then we'll start doing a budget update every couple of weeks so that we're tracking live where we're at. So that we make sure we're hitting where it is. And those budgets are always open. Like I said, we can share as much or as little detail as you want. We're not hiding anything. We want you guys to know what we're thinking. We want the design team to know what we're thinking, because sometimes the designers might be thinking one thing in their head and I'm thinking another thing. And if we're off, then we want to make sure that we're talking about the same thing.
And I'll add that those, those do continue through construction. A lot of times, Dr. Lake, when we're going through and if you might want to know, you know, where we stand, we're doing those same budgets through construction as well. Herefore, we stand at 25%.
There won't be any might that I want to know where we are. And there won't be any if I want to come out to the job site. I'll be out there daily. So as I am now.
All right.
That's him. Yep, that's him. The second question is in relation to guaranteed maximum price. Please share your experience with guaranteed maximum price and best practices on contingency percentages, owner and contractor, and then allowances. So when you get to that point, I know in our project, that's a way out, you know, because we're just starting to design and we have a lot of work to do before we even have the money in the bank. But when we get to that point, what are your best practices around that number?
So with the, I'll start with contingencies, because those are usually the, they contribute a lot to where that GMP lands. So there's, try not to get too detailed, because again, I nerd out. But there's many vehicles to approach unknown. And when it comes to contingencies, it's all about managing risk, whether known or unknown. Sometimes you know the risk, but you're trying to limit the, the risk on the bid market, if you will. So we know that there's an unsuitable soils condition. And sometimes it makes sense to just put that on the bidders to, you know, try to maximize or capitalize on that risk. Other times, we want to control that risk, so we'll set an allowance or a contingency. You can use various terminologies for the same vehicle to get to the same problem. Or if we level that playing field, we're eliminating these high variance in the, the bidding pool. We can kind of control some of that. Other times, it makes sense to let the contractors kind of gamble on it. It just depends on the, you know, there's many variables go into that. From a market standpoint, again, as we're reaching out to trade contractors and we're talking about when is the project going to be out for bid? Can we maximize that by bidding earlier or later? If not, and there's a lot of variance, maybe we'll carry a higher contingency on the market escalation side, depending on products and things that we're selecting. Allowances for various things. I mean, you can do as many as you want. We, we don't like to just say, we're going to do 10% contingency on every project, or we're going to do 5% contingency on every project, or 2% or whatever it is. We take each project, we evaluate the risk, understanding that there's, there's always a risk. There's always unknowns. Nobody's perfect. Designers, constructors, nobody's perfect. So there's always a risk, but how can we get the best value for the risk and identify as much risk as we can before we're underway? Which leads into the GMP. So we have a lot of experience with GMPs. And, you know, Ryan also has had a lot of experience with GMPs from the design side, you know, and how they, how designers like to approach that. But we want to set a GMP that's realistic and conservative. So we wants to be, we want it to be accurate at the end of the day. But we also don't want to sell you something and then it's not true. We want to be truthful. We want to discuss the contingencies, discuss where we're being conservative and why, so that as the owner, you can understand. And then that way, everybody's, it goes back to communication again. It's always about clear lines of communication. We want you to know where we're thinking and why. And if you disagree, we want to discuss that.
Okay, sounds good. Summarize the benefits of utilizing the CMAR method and why your firm would be the best choice for Lindbergh Schools. I guess of hard bid versus, you know, structure management risk and what you guys have to offer.
I, I think the upfront partnership that, you know, that goes back and forth between designers, constructors, and the school district is, is the number one reason to go CMR. You know, you get the, you know, get the GMP established earlier. You get the constructability review earlier in the, in the process versus, you know, you know, later on, you know, after the bids come in. And then you get a, you know, a value engineer idea. You don't get the same bang for your buck. So, so all that is, you know, is upfront before, before any bidding takes place. And for the most part, you know, we can, we can hash all that, those items out and then take it to, to bid. Therefore maximizing the, the bang for your buck.
I think, I agree with that. It eliminates a lot of surprises. There's a lot of development that we have upfront to be able to kind of give the, the best, like Ben was talking about. A lot of these projects, when is the best time it should hit the street? You know, we know that, that, that's, that's kind of our thing. If, if we've got education questions, we're going to go to the experts as well. We know what is taking place out in the world right now on the construction side. So there's, there's things that, all aspects that I feel like on the construction manager, there's a reason why this is booming for the, the school districts right now. It's started up in Chicago and it's making its way to Missouri as well. I think it's going to continue on throughout. There's, I think the probably the biggest thing I would say though is eliminating that surprise effect and giving you that balance of quality assurance that, hey, I'm, I'm avoiding issues for my operations, maintenance nightmares after these guys leave from the construction site. Two, three years later, I'm eliminating or at least reducing some of those effects that can, can take place.
Okay. Last item I have is it's the final question. More it's really opinion. We're not going to use it for evaluation purposes, but because you guys are the experts, we're not expert in construction. That's why we look to hire folks like you. But in the, as an expert in the K-12 construction marketplace, how have processes and markets changed post-COVID? Are there any new norms in the industry as a result of COVID, related pricing, labor, or material issues? And then how will the next three to five years look? You know, what are you guys thinking? You know, lots of things have changed since COVID. So. This is opinion. I'm not upgrading you on it, just because you guys are out there in the field.
Well, obviously, the, I'm on, I don't, I think I'm on three or four different boards strictly for worker shortage.
Yeah. And this is our board. This is good information for them to understand too, on the construction side.
Just trying to, and, and it kind of goes back to, to why we engage the students as much as we can, just to get them thinking. But worker shortage is, is a huge, huge, huge problem. It's not going to go away anytime soon. You know, and, and that's, that has obviously been compounding for several years now. Material, we can get material in Tommy one. No, just.
We'd have every, we'd have every job in the world.
Material, that, that's another reason, you know, why, you know, why we're so heavily involved in the pre-construction side. You know, whether it's a gear, electrical gear or, or air handling unit. You know, some things are, you know, a year and a half out and we have to plan for that. You know, if it's, if it's, you know, working with the design team to, to come up with a different solution, or we put an early bid package out. It's, you know, it's an issue and, you know, I'm not going to say we're used to it, to the issue. But, you know, we understand the issue and we are getting out in front of the issue as much as we possibly can. And that's, I mean, it's just, it's, it's huge, huge difference from, you know, three or four years ago.
So is this the new norm, I guess? That's what I'm asking you guys.
I really think it kind of goes back to another.
Right, things go back to the way where they were before.
Going back to the, you know, why CMAR, that equipment thing, that's, you know, we're engaging with the subcontractors upfront. They, I, what's going to be delayed six months from now? They usually have a handle on that better than, than we would. And you never know what's going to be. It could be a just four inch conduit, you know, or it could be this different, just those 400 amp panel board or 600 amp panel boards were the last thing. They were just four meter, meter bases. So it's, it's just odds and ends that you wouldn't know unless you're engaging with those subcontractors upfront.
Yeah, and sometimes it's as simple as we're specifying a train rooftop unit and their 20-week lead time. And we call up Dyken and they're like, oh, we've got 10 weeks. And it's like, okay, well, we need to know that. And maybe, maybe you're guys facility operations people, again, communication. We want to get the people that run these buildings when we walk away to have input. And maybe, you know, maybe that doesn't make sense to go to a, a unit they're not familiar with. But, you know, information is key. We want to make sure that you guys have the information. And then you can instruct us what, where the values are. And again, maybe we can save money somewhere else if we really want to focus on having a unified building automation system across the district, across the building. Maybe that's not as big a concern. Maybe your, your staff is confident in their ability to manage multiple systems. You know, there's a million different variables and a million things that can go on. And to Ryan's point with the, the labor force shortage or workforce shortage. Sometimes it's, we ran, we were in a market not that long ago that was having the real problems with labor shortage. So we switched a system to a, a precast wall instead of CMU, because you can put precast up with five guys instead of 20. You know, that kind of, that kind of thing, that it costs a little more for the wall, but we can get it done faster and we can meet a deadline. But we, the main thing I want to communicate or get across is that we're communicating all these decisions with the district, with the design team. You know, we're here to work with everybody. We want to put all the options on the table and have a, a discussion about, these are the avenues we can go down. These are the benefits. These are the cons. These are the, you know, the, what way do we want to go? And it's not what way Putker wants to go, and it's not what way the designer wants to go. It's what way does Lindbergh want to go? But we want you guys to have the information in front of you to have, to be able to make those decisions and make them from an educated position.
Perfect. That makes sense. And so tonight, we're, we're interviewing three firms. Tomorrow, we'll send out an RFP for additional information on really the, since we don't have our projects finalized yet and we're looking out to the future. Is we're going to be looking for that RFP profit percent, you know, that's really the only number we can ask for now, because we're way ahead of the game. And then those responses will be back due to the district on 3/8 with our goal of taking this to our March, March board meeting. And then immediately after that, when we already have our architects on staff and our facilities crew is ready to hit the ground running on the projects that we've put out for CMAR, just to start planning. So a year from now, we're in better shape. So I don't know if you guys have any questions for us, but that's what we have tonight.
No, I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you very much.
We appreciate you spending the time on the qualifications and coming in.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Are you good? Okay.
Your turn.
Is everything else ready for you guys to go? He's ready. He's taking control, yeah. No problem.
Ready, guys? All right. Welcome to the special board meetings to conduct interviews with qualified offers for the construction management risk. Construction management risk is new at Missouri schools, as you guys know. It was 2018 when our policy allowed us to look at this construction method. So tonight, we are interviewing three firms, and we're going to let you do your presentation, then I'll have a few questions. So go ahead.
Well, thank you so much for having us here this evening. My name's Amanda Bonner. I'm the chief marketing officer and one of the executives at Essa Molsen &amp; Company. I've been there for 19 years, and my role in this project is really to help on the community side, the engagement, making sure that you're getting everything you need out of this project. So we brought quite a big team with us here today, and we know we have a limited amount of time, but we really wanted to show how passionate, how committed we are to this project and just dedicated. So we're going to actually drive our presentation tonight from a website, and you guys have access to that website on that placemat as a QR code. And you won't get all the information tonight, but you're welcome to jump on there at any time to kind of see this information. Essa Molsen, a little bit about our company. We are 100 years old, we're 100% employee-owned, and we are premier K through 12 construction builder. We go beyond the build to really inspire the communities where we live, work, learn, heal, and play. And we've worked with more than 35 school districts in Missouri and in Illinois, and in Missouri alone at 65 different school buildings. So we love what we do, and we do it a little bit differently. We know that you're looking at a lot of great firms tonight, we're all great, solid builders, but we feel like we do just a little bit extra to go beyond the build, which is really our mission. So our experience leads us to have become one of the 100 top K through 12 builders in the nation. And we have more than 1.2 billion of CM at risk experience. Just 545 million of that alone is in schools since the change in the Missouri state statute and in Illinois as well. And maybe even more importantly, we've helped 19 different pre-referendum issues pass. So we've been part of the program of 19 different bond issues passing. We built more than 6,000 classrooms and also have 12 different storm shelters under construction. We know those are part of your building program as well. So what does all this expertise kind of translate to? Mark's going to tell you a little bit more about how that really plays into our processes and how we actually deliver.
Sure, thank you, Amanda. As Amanda said, my name is Mark Cochran, I'm the chief operating officer for Essa Molsen. And my primary role here tonight and on this project would be to support our team, to ensure that we're delivering on the commitments that we make to you here, as well as to your community, your students, and your taxpayers. So Amanda went over a lot of great stats, and when you really think about that, it's something that brings a lot of knowledge. And what does it really mean for you as a district when you look at, we built 6,000 classrooms, we currently have under contract over half a billion dollars in public K-12 construction management at risk work. And what that really means for you is we have all this data and knowledge to take from these experiences, whether it's a remodel that's extremely complicated, student safety, we're taking all that information, and you are beneficiaries of that information. We're going to use that on the costing side of life, we're going to use that on the schedule side of life, we're going to use that on the student safety side of life. So all those skills and experiences we have are going to come to you in a form that is going to benefit you, your students, your teachers, and your taxpayers. Another huge component of that is it's a challenge, especially in today's market, is program and budget alignment. And I want to talk a little bit about that in two different phases. Really, I commend you as a district for getting a CM involved at this process and this stage. You know, you're a year out from this referendum discussion, so there's a lot of work that has to happen now, and it's a great time to have a CM involved. And what we can do is we can take the knowledge that we have from all these projects and all this cost history and sequencing and phasing, and really work with you and partner with not only you, but Honer and Perkins and Will, and come up with a plan. We understand you probably have priorities, you know, whether it's the Truman School, the storm shelters, understand what other work we can do with that, and establishing basically a ranking system, a priority system, and allocating your funds that you're planning... We understand you probably have priorities, you know, whether it's the Truman School, the storm shelters, understand what other work we can do with that and establishing basically a ranking system, a priority system and allocating your funds that you're planning on to really have a defined plan to make that work at the end of the day. So that's our role for the next year to ensure that we're engaged with the community, the community understands the work you're going to do, they're gonna understand how the student safety is gonna be addressed, they're gonna understand how the student learning environment from noise and disruptions is gonna be addressed. That's our job to help you when we go to this referendum have a defined plan that we know will be in budget and we're gonna develop and deliver the program we've talked about. So our role is really that from the pre-referendum side of life. So it's again, it's cost certainty with the program and then the budget at the end of the day. And as we move into that pre-construction service side of life, when we actually start working on the drawings and with the architect and the estimates, our job is to really take that work we did in the pre-referendum side and ensure we're in step with that. We have a process that we can, it's called target value design and we really, through that process, are gonna establish specific values for specific components of work. And we're gonna work with the architectural team and you all to ensure that our budget isn't aligned with that and the design isn't aligned with that. So that's really our role in that next step is to ensure what we've talked about, what you've committed to your constituents, that we deliver that at that stage. The other thing that I think is extremely important with all that experience we have is we have a significant detailed track record of saving our clients money, specifically in the K twelve arena. And traditionally that's in the five to eight percent of building program cost and that's through a myriad of issues, whether it's alternative material selections, alternative scheduling techniques. There are lots of different ways that we do that and a lot of times that doesn't show up at the end of the day on what that contract value is, because we encourage our clients to reinvest that, you know. Maybe there's some programming stuff, I know pending budget discussions, there's other programs you wanna do. It's great to be able to roll those in into the program side of life. So that's really, as we get through that, we'll go through the traditional bidding process. Again, you've probably heard from lots of folks today on what that process looks like. We'll engage the bidding community, we'll evaluate those, we'll develop a G M. P. That's in alignment with that budget and our process ensures and we have a proven track record of that G M. P. Being in alignment with our estimates that we do throughout that pre-construction and pre-referendum services. So that's a real short tidbit of how we handle pre-construction and pre-referendum services and I'm sure there'll be plenty of questions when we get into that, but I want to, in the essence of time, want to turn it over to Jerry and Bernie and let them talk about our cost control once we moved out of that pre-construction phase.
So hi, I'm Bernie Birch, I'm, my role is the project director and really I am here to support the execution team and to make sure that everything that Mark just talked about, we actually execute and you benefit from it. You know, so I'm here to make sure that everybody, as far as the entire team, not just the S.M. Wilson team, but the entire team has what they need to understand what your priorities are, you know, how much of the program we can get in, how much of the logistics we can work through. And really make sure that your experience is amazing and that you're benefiting from having us come in early and using that C M. At Risk method for contracting. So really, you know, trying to meet your expectations, understanding priorities in the program, getting that in, trying to solve problems. The other thing is on the cost control side, we're here to try to identify risks early and to provide solutions quickly and do any sort of value engineering that we can as quickly as possible, you know, and that's gonna start pre-referendum and continue through the end of the project. So there's, at any point, we can, we can take a look and see what we need to do to help move things along, if that's value engineering and any of those kind of things, you know, to support the overall master budget. The other thing is, is that be part of the communication to you to make sure that we're being transparent, we're being accurate, we're being realistic. You know, there's different forms of that, we can help with any of the master budget discussions, you know, the G M. P., any of the master schedule to kind of understand how we flow through, how we enable work from a site logistics standpoint and not be very disruptive to the campus and the ongoing activities of the of the school. So that's another big thing that we want to make sure that, you know, we're kind of in the background doing what we need to do and not being really disruptive to your day-to-day activities. So that's my role and so I look forward to being here from the very beginning all the way to, you know, when students enter the facility, so it'll be exciting. I'll turn it over to Jerry and he can kind of talk more about some of the cost control things.
So when I work with logistics and scheduling, it's money that you spend to get ready to do the work. So it's careful, required to be careful to plan that ahead of time. When we get into the post-referendum, I do constructibility reviews and that you get a cost benefit and value for the systems and the products picked from buildings. And then, of course, there's more scheduling and then communication is key once we're into construction for the principals, the school superintendent, facilities people. And that's what I do. Mike Superintendent is really the doer.
Thanks, Jerry. Mike, actually, my role would be general superintendent and I was kind of adding up last night, I think there's seven districts I've worked in the St. Louis area so far. We've got a hundred-year program that you guys are familiar with, you saw in the literature there. I've not been here for a hundred years, I've only been here for twenty. We, what I do is verify basically what they're telling you as far as schedules, things like that, to make sure they're realistic, that they can actually happen. We're all aware of some of the changes that's happened in the different districts right now, materials, things like that. We've instituted a lot of different controls on that. Safety is one of my big priorities. I've worked with a lot of the principals and what we do is typically is when we get into a school, we'll meet with the administrators, we'll meet with the principal. I have all of our superintendents, including myself, will fill out a daily work task, telling them what we're doing, because we're gonna be in your building, we don't want you to be taken by surprise. Logistics, we get with you in the beginning, a lot of times it'll be something where eyes may see it one way, you see it a different way and we try and work together on it to make sure it's working for everybody. Safety, like I said, is our, our big thing, we've got a really good track record on that. A lot of the districts that we've worked in are always an occupied campus, we have to work around your schedules, your guys are here for a short period of time, so we have to get the things done when we can in those areas, so it works out really well for all of us. Basically, that's all I've got.
Mike, is there anything in terms of the quality side of life, you know, talk a little bit about the three sixty photos that we'll be sharing with, with the team?
Yeah, so typically we'll go in and if it's an existing building, we'll go in, we'll do three sixty photos so that we can see the conditions that are there. As we're going through it, we use several programs, one of the ones that we use primarily out in the field is we use Autodesk, which is basically a living document. When Perkins and Will gets the drawings ready, we update any of the changes in there so that it's current. All of our subs utilize the same thing, so you know, things have evolved a lot in the last twenty years. It used to be you had a big set of drawings and you were always fumbling through those, trying to get the latest updates, R F I.'s, things like that. Plan Autodesk is, it's right there in front of you, so there's, R F I.'s are in there, all your submittals are in there, so as you're walking around confirming things and make sure they're done correctly, you have it right in front of you, so there's no guessing. Every one of our superintendents has an iPad that they use, so like I said, it's, it's with you all the time, so you can actually view what's going on in the field, make sure it's being done correctly.
On the website here, that's an example of that construction site and that's something that lives with you guys forever and it's, we take those photos at specific times, so before we cover up the project with drywall, we'll go through every room and photo document that stuff. Facilities has that forever and it's even a scalable discussion, so if you're going to install a marker board in three years, you could pull this photo up and look at it, hey, do I have an electrical conduit here or water line here? And again, that's something that we provide for you all for perpetuity.
One of the other things that we do is, I work with a lot of facilities guys, you know, it's one thing when the architect draws it up, but it's another thing to realize if it's serviceable or not later on down the road when you've gotta do any kind of maintenance on there, all that. So we kind of walk through that, making sure that there's access panels for them or maybe a V A. V. Or something needs to be turned the other direction so that it's usable and your guys can get in there and have a less impact on your students.
Mike, why don't you talk just a moment about what you have done in the pre-referendum phases for some of your other jobs along those same lines?
Ladue, we had numerous meetings in their actual facilities area, went over different things. Some of the things that I've learned over the years with working with different principals, things that we take for granted, they look at it a totally different aspect. I'll give you a prime example, I did the Ladue High School, ran that project. Brad and I were walking around, I looked at a stairwell as an escape means for me to get, you know, people in and out and he looked at it as a hiding place for kids to get underneath of it. So we made some changes in that aspect to make sure that, you know, there wasn't any areas where kids could be hiding out, because it's been a long time since I've been in school and trust me, I didn't crawl under stairs and things like that when I was there. So like I said, that's something he, I just took for granted, we were using it as a means of getting up and down the stairs and he looked at it totally different. So a lot of those impacts have kind of changed how I look at things. I look a total different when I go into a school now. Like I said, making sure the doors are locked with the way things are going nowadays, all of our people are background checked. We have a sticker program, we've had badge programs, we've had a lot of different ways to make sure that we're having that under control. And my biggest thing that I've always tried to do is isolate my construction, excuse me, isolate my construction from the general public and the schools. And by doing that, building temporary partitions that are locked to where we're in that, in that part. Now, there are times where we have to get in where it's occupied, but most of the time we try and separate the two out, that way I have a better control over it.
There's a couple of things we went through that I want to just call your attention to. Back on the safety page, there is, when you have some time, there's a video on there that we did for Francis Hell North, that project, the front entrance had to be completely kind of torn apart and there's multiple schools on that campus. So we created this video and even had some bus drivers come out that they sent to the parents ahead of time, so they knew where drop, new drop-off loops were, so they knew where new parking was for their students, so they say, they knew some of that information. And then back on the G M. P. Page, that is actually, there's a picture there of our cost control, of a dashboard that we've used with another school district to see how much allowances you have, how much contingencies you have. And this is updated, you know, on a weekly basis with, with that. So those are just a couple of examples I wanted to call to you real quick. Anything else out on the construction side? So with that, we're gonna move into, so community engagement. So S.M. Wilson's tagline is beyond the build and it's our goal to do more than just build this project for you, to actually become a partner with the school district. And we know that your stakeholders need to be informed, they need to be informed through the pre-referendum phase and they also need to be, stay informed during the building process. So a few of the value adds we have is this website can be turned into either something internal facing for your school district or external facing, that we can share information about the referendum or once construction starts, we could put project webcam links on here, we can basically do project updates and it just helps keep everybody engaged. We also work on job site celebrations and social media, we share all these things, because we're just as excited as you are to go through this process. And quite frankly, in my eyes, one of the best value adds that we bring is a program called Skilled. Skilled was founded in twenty nineteen and I'm a parent of two school-aged kiddos myself. And when my, when my son was four, he went to preschool in the local high school and the high school was being renovated. And every day, all I saw was this pain that I had to like, my drop-off location was closed and now I had to walk all the way through the school and drag my four-year-old with me doing it. And one day he stopped and he saw some workers just working in the hallway and he was just enamored by what was going on. And I took a moment, I kind of looked through his eyes and I was like, what a cool opportunity that every day you get to see all these different careers and all these things happening right outside your window. And so actually, that was not our project, but I worked with his preschool teacher at the time and we themed his room around construction. So all of his little segments that his school went to, they were all construction themed. And I, I thought to myself, why can't we do this at S.M. Wilson? Our teams are already entrenched, they're already taking tours with the schools, with the kids, Mike knows everybody on that site. Why can't we make this a formalized program that we can give back to create these inconvenient construction sites, because that's what they are, and turn them into interactive learning opportunities? Because all of these different STEM opportunities are just happening right outside your door. And so we've been able to do that with the skilled program and we're incredibly proud of that. And Maggie is our skilled coordinator and I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that.
Thanks, Amanda. Good evening, everyone, I'm Maggie Farrell, I'm the diversity and H R. Manager at S.M. Wilson. My role is to support the company and the projects, skilled and other community engagement programs, as well as our diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives. Skilled, as Amanda said, really complements our work in the K through twelve market and it's such an important component of our D E. I. And workforce development efforts. We look forward to collaborating with you to identify opportunities for students at all levels, hands-on engaging activities to, throughout the construction process. And our project teams, including our trade partners, truly enjoy that connection with the students, with the staff and the community to create these memorable experiences that really highlight all the cool things that the construction industry has to offer. So through our programs like Build and Tell and Follow the Build, as well as career presentations, STEAM challenges and art installations, we can expose them to a multitude of careers in the architecture, engineering and construction industries. And the mission is simply to inspire the future of construction, but additionally, we know that that's also contributing to increasing the diversity of the construction industry while helping us create a workforce pipeline for the skilled trades. We know that collaborative, diverse teams are critical to having an innovative and successful project. So we'll work intentionally to identify opportunities for workforce diversity and for women, businesses owned by women, people of color and veterans, along with local suppliers as we're building with your district. We have a culture of care program where we're committing to create a safe, welcoming and inclusive work environment that's free from harassment, hazing and bullying, where all members of the team are empowered to succeed and they're valued for their lived experiences, their perspective and their contributions to the project. So we'll develop a customized plan that will set the tone and the expectations for a respectful job site that prioritizes the dignity and the safety of everyone involved, including your students, staff and community. Knowing and recognizing that a culture of belonging really starts with that psychological safety. So mental health and suicide prevention are important parts of our culture of care plan. We have conversations, host toolbox talks and share resources to help address the stigma associated with mental health problems and seeking help when needed, which is particularly a challenge in our industry. So we've had several of our project teams that have hosted safety stand downs, recognizing mental health awareness month, suicide prevention month, including a couple of months back at the Francis Hell North site, where about two hundred workers onsite there had an opportunity to hear impactful messages from two mental health experts. And it's really been amazing to see the construction industry being involved in that and the impact that that's making on our teams and the safety of the industry and the folks involved with the project. So you'll see that our commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion is woven into our values and our beliefs that we're stronger together through programs like Skilled and the culture of care. We know that we'll be able to create a successful project for the district and for the community and making a lasting impact on those communities and the construction industry too.
Thanks, Maggie. That wraps up our formal stuff, we've got a short closing, but wanted to open up for any questions that you may have of us.
I have some prepared questions that we're asking while three of the firms being interviewed this evening. First one is, C M. A. R. Is often referred to as open book. Construction, what does open book mean to S.M. Wilson?
From S.M. Wilson's perspective, and we'll have anyone jump in and add their perspective on this, is when I think about open book and the way we address open book, it is, it is that everything is open for review. We're completely transparent to the point, you know, we have a bid opening this week with a school client in town, that they're coming to our office to open the bids, we're reviewing the bids together, we're evaluating the bids together. We provide every backup, every receipt of every cost that goes into a project, that is always provided with everything we do. And open book for us is fully transparent, there is nothing that we are. do. Uh, and open book for us is fully transparent. There is nothing that we are trying to hide, you know, for lack of a better word. It is exactly that. Any question is, is fair game and, and anything we do, whether it's the financial side or risk side with subcontractors, that is all open, uh, for review and, and discussion.
Um, second question pertaining GMP, you know, our GMP on this, these projects way out because we're in early planning. But, um, as you guys being experts, um, please share your experience with GMP and best practices on contingency percentages, owner and contractor and allowances.
That's a multi-person answer here. And you'll get, uh, some perspectives on, on this. Again, from our perspective, we understand, uh, and again, the benefit of CM at Risk is there's cost certainty for, for you all. And that's where our experience really comes in when we're working in this pre-referendum side of life and, and pre-construction, we're working with that budget and that, that program and, and locking that in there and really working with the design team to make sure it's in alignment there. When it gets to the discussions of creating that GMP, obviously following, uh, Missouri statutes sixty-seven, fifty, fifty on how we're bidding that, that work, evaluating that stuff, um, we have taken approach to the contingency side of life of, again, it's an open book, transparent discussion. Our, I, I would never suggest that, you know, assign three percent contingency for all these projects or five percent at the end of the day. We want to evaluate the risk of the projects with the group as a team and, and come up and try to monetize that risk and address how we do that. So we will come up with an aggregate discussion of what that contingency is, both owner and, and contractor. And I think a big part of this process is having clear definitions of what pot those discussions come from or what pot those issues come from. And that's something I would encourage. We would sit down and have a, a very open discussion about what is construction contingency, what is owner contingency. Uh, the same discussion about, about allowances. Our, when, we will recommend that there are allowances within, uh, the contract. And, and a lot of that is when we're doing that, we're trying to get, again, the best value for the school district at that point. And an allowance traditionally is handled where there's a risk that's unquantifiable a lot of times. We can assign some values to it, but we also don't want the bidding community to assign a lot of risk to that. And then if things go great on their side or it's not as defined, uh, and they effectively take advantage of that or, or they get a lot of extra, uh, contract value out of that. So those are just some perspectives from, from my side. Bernie and Jerry, um, open to thoughts.
Every kind of remodel has a different risk. You did a major remodel here. You did a major remodel where you were taking out block walls. That was certainly more risky than just the demolition of your Radford Science Building. Um, so each job has to be viewed on its own merits and its own risk and what is known and what's not.
Yeah, I'd say contingencies on our side and your side would be, you know, just, you know, we can look at numbers or we can look at percentages, but it's really stuff to take care of stuff, right? Like we just, things come up that we have to handle of, whether that's the contractor side or the owner's side. Allowances can be kind of identified in each area of the GMP. Like there could be some known risk maybe, um, but a little bit unknown as far as quantity. And so we will take a, a look at, you know, trying to quantify that and taking a look at a square foot price and trying to assign something that would be, you know, a little bit more specific, uh, in a work category group or, you know, something that's a, a little bit more definable, but, um, is not kind of in that contingency where it's, it's there to, you know, take care of stuff. And that's really where our experience right now, you know, having over five hundred million under contract, working with CM at Risk right now. And a lot of those are, uh, you know, we've got twelve storm shelters under construction. A lot of these are multi-campus, multi-building programs to where we have that institutional knowledge to know, yes, this is an appropriate, hey, we ran into that three years ago. Here's how we address that. That knowledge is invaluable for us to address these, uh, risks appropriately.
I have a question here that is really a question. It's really opinion-based and it won't be any part of your evaluation, but we got an expert panel here. So we've been asking, um, all of our interviewees this, that, um, as experts in the construction marketplace, how have processes and markets changed post-COVID? Um, are there any new norms in the industry as a result of COVID, pricing, labor or material? Um, and what do you see happening in the next three to five years? I know you can't predict the future, but I want to hear what you guys think because you are the experts.
We're gonna need the eight ball.
It's an opinion.
So big picture, there are a couple of obvious discussions. Um, one, the, the schedule side of life, that's where I think there, there are two components, schedule and cost, that we've seen the most dramatic impact on. Um, and there are things that we can do on, on both sides to mitigate that. And, and we'll never mitigate all of it at the end of the day, but we've come up with plans and I'll just share a few on the schedule side of life, some recent examples. We are out actively, um, working with our design teams to basically develop a, a load for the electrical switchgear. And we may be buying electrical switchgear well before we've ever started the design side of the building to where we're going out to the manufacturers directly procuring that, ensuring that it's here in time. Because right now it's over a year to get, uh, substantial gear section. Same discussion with air handlers, uh, roof insulation. We've had projects where we rent warehouses to get material and, and hold it, uh, to address the cost and the availability, uh, from, from that side of life. We are seeing on the price escalation side of, of life, the volatility has tabled, uh, but we're still seeing significant upward movement. Uh, you know, we had a lot of issues with prices being good for two days, three days, seeing significant jumps month over month. A lot of that has leveled off and it's more consistent, steady climb. Um, so again, part of that discussion is how do you strategically buy that work in the time where you're not asking subcontractors also to bear a hundred percent on the risk on a job that's two years out? Because what's going to happen is if you tell them that, they're going to add thirty, forty, fifty, sixty percent to their material costs to address that. So we've come up with strategies to, based on the specific trade that it's in, specific commodity, um, or identifying specific allowances with escalation. We're indexing material prices to, I'll use asphalt as an example, to the MODOC price index and saying, look, we bid the job at this point, the MODOC price index is Y, and we know how many tons of asphalt we have. Um, that's a, a, an objective index that we use to, to monitor that instead of someone trying to predict what that price is going to be two years in advance.
Just to add on that, I mean, choosing the CMAR method is really going to help you navigate those risks because we can, we can plan for that stuff. We can add the allowances. You can add into your GMP. You, we are on the hook for the GMP. That's your guaranteed maximum price. And we've seen, uh, a lot of school districts still competitively hard bid and they're coming in way over budget. And they already have spent all their money on the design documents and they didn't have any input on all these delayed materials or the materials that we can't get or the price escalation. So just choosing this delivery method, you will help navigate those, those solutions in the next three to five years because we don't have that crystal ball. Um, and it does look different than it ever has before.
I mean, labor.
Yes.
Sure. And I think we've seen the challenges labor and, and really, you know, the, the skilled discussion is really where that stemmed from because we've seen the shortage of labor coming for a number of years. Um, so we, um, we're really trying to, to build that labor pool at the end of the day. What we have to do as construction managers is we have to make, uh, this project entisive for bidding and we have to make it entisive for the actual tradespeople that are here working. They have to enjoy that experience. They have to want to come and work on these projects for the Lindbergh School. And that's one of the things we look at doing is, you know, having a great schedule, having Mike be a great superintendent and having daily meetings with, you know, the people onsite, understanding what are their challenges? Because at the end of the day, there are only so many tradespeople in St. Louis that you're pulling from. You've got to do everything you can to have them come to work on the Lindbergh project. And that's really how we are addressing that part of it. Because it, again, we're trying to get more people into the trades, absolutely. And that's, we're having success of that. We have a lot of, but it's, it's a long soak process to do that. So we, that is what, really what we're trying to do is make this project attractive for the tradespeople to work there. Not only the tradespeople, but the companies as well.
Thank you. Count it as an opinion, not an evaluation. Uh, the last one we have, which will probably work well with your final slides is, um, you know, summarize why you're the best, um, choice for Lindbergh Schools, um, and why utilizing the CMAR, which you already addressed that as well, um, is the best choice for Lindbergh Schools. So summarize it up.
Yeah. I mean, SM Wilson is a premier builder, but more than that, I mean, we, we do want to integrate with your school districts. We have worked with Perkins and Will. We worked with Honer. We have successful relationships there. And we want to be, you know, member of your community and we want to see this be successful. We want to work for you for a long time and build those repeat relationships. And we look at this as a holistic project. It's more than just building a building. It's more than, you know, it's laying roots and foundations for the entire community. And that's why everyone of our projects has the skilled component and it has the community involvement, has Maggie. And we do the DEI components regardless of the, if that's what our clients are really, you know, engaging us on or not. So that's what we deem our true importance and our value as bringing to the table.
I think on, on top of that, that's all, you know, tremendous value that we're bringing. But then can't lose track of our proven track record at the end of the day. Um, the numbers speak for themselves on our ability to deliver this type of work. In addition, saving money, uh, for you that either, you know, goes on to the next bond program or goes back into additional programming. So those, those two components there are really, uh, from, from our aspect are, are why SM Wilson, uh, at the end of the day, uh, is...
And we believe CM at Risk is the best way to build. I mean, honestly, going back to that first question, we already answered.
So I got a quick question. So exactly right. That's why we're here because CMAR, I don't want to tell our community, we have these projects and then we come back, oh, we don't have the money to do it. So that's why we're doing that. Second is, um, yes, your numbers indicate lots of success and all of that, but how do I know or this board, how are you going to guarantee that we are priority? Um, do you, what does your workforce look like? I know that, um, company, construction companies we work with right, right now are always looking to hire. So I guess how, what does that team look like for us? Because, um, this board and our community won't be, I mean, you got li- I, I, I know all the projects you're doing. We won't be second fiddle to, to anybody. So how do, how do you ensure that or what does our team look like? I know what teams I have worked with in the past and place. So just if you kind of just talk to me about that a little bit.
Yeah, I, I, great question and, and reasonable question, especially the, the one, um, like the great thing I'll share out of that five hundred million, we have two hundred and fifty million of it that is wrapping up at the end of this year and early next year at the end of the day. So from our staff's experience, I think it's a tremendous opportunity that, you know, we brought Jerry and, and, and Mike here and Mike's working on one of those jobs that finishes up the end of this year. We have twenty or thirty people that have been working on those two significant building programs that are going to be done, uh, by the time this project starts. And absolutely, that team, great experience, a lot of learning experience from challenging sites, multiple sites. Um, I'm absolutely confident in our ability to shift and move those team members, uh, over here. From my, my perspective in terms of being responsible for the, the staffing side of life with us, I see absolutely no issue, uh, giving you the best team and, and you wouldn't play second fiddle to anyone.
Had a chance on the high school job.
Well, I'll get you guys to summarize and we'll be out of here by six thirty. You had slides, you said you had some slides to end up with?
No, I mean, really, we, we wrapped it up.
Oh, you did? All right.
We're, we're good.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
All right, there you go. Appreciate efficiency.
Last time you guys gave me some, you want to take it back and think about it? I don't have to have it today.
Finished the meeting. This concludes our meeting for the evening. So we'll, you'll move to five point O adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn special board meeting fifteen sixty-nine?
So moved.
Motion by Christie.
Second.
Second by Megan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Special board meeting fifteen sixty-nine is adjourned.